So we'll call to order the Sodex City Council's special meeting, December twenty-third, twenty-twenty. The clerk, please call the role.
Dean?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Truster?
Here.
Becken?
Here. Uh. So everyone is present. The, uh. Do we have any agenda changes to make? I'd like to reshuffle, uh, under action item six. I would like to make, uh, item B, Wick's Park, actually the first agenda item. And move the city manager contract down after that. Okay, so six B becomes six A, and six A becomes six B. Is there any disagreement with that? Anybody have concern with that? Okay. Thank you. So moving on, uh, this portion of the meeting is for, uh, public comment regarding agenda items only. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When recognized, please, uh, state your name and community of residence. So the floor is open to public comment. Please let us know if you'd like to address council.
I did not see anybody mayor.
Okay. Give a few more moments. Okay, if no comment this time, there'll be a second opportunity at the end of the meeting if, uh, public wishes to run council at that time. Moving on to discussion items. First agenda item is the release of the, uh, Ballas Selman donation. Karen, you want to kick that off, please?
Sure. Well, exactly one year ago today, the city accepted a donation from the David Ballas Jim Selman Living Trust to be used to construct a performing arts band shell in Wick's Park. The amount of the donation was one hundred thousand dollars. Couple months ago, the city started in on the design work, and it quickly became a source of contention in town. The, the verbal and written comments were, we like Wick's Park as it is, we don't need a new band shell. And for this reason, uh, Mr. Selman has requested that his donation be released back to him. At your last meeting, I told you that Mr. Selman, uh, didn't want the taxpayers to have to pay for any work done to date. However, I am recommending that his donation be returned to him in full. And that is because he is totally blameless in this situation. He, he gave the money in good faith that a band shell would be built. And it doesn't appear that it will be at this time anyway. We had the money in a CD earning interest. It's not a lot of interest, but it is interest. Interest follows principle, so if we return the full donation to him, the print, the interest of eighteen-hundred should also go to him. If council agrees, uh, his attorney is just waiting for the dollar amount to fill in the, the blank. And we'll have it back to you on Monday's agenda for approval.
Hey, uh, council comment? Anyone wish to address this?
Sure, Mark, this, this is Garn and Karen, I appreciate, I appreciate your work on this. Uh, I think it's, uh, right and just to return his donation in full with interest. Yeah, this has been a difficult year for Jim, and, um, I just think this is the most kind-hearted thing for us to do as a council. So I'm good to go. I'm good to go with that. What I, what I'd like to see also is that we, um, as a city, uh, basically put together an advisory group to, uh, look at a private-public partnership, kind of like a capital campaign to repair, uh, the current band shell since there's such passion around it. And I believe Ms. Sanford's on the line, and I would recommend that Peg take the lead on that as the community representative since she was the person who, uh, took the lead on the petition. That's it.
Okay, uh, any other council comment? Okay, Karen, it, uh, I think, uh, council's in the affirmative that we'd like to see that as a action item per your recommendation, Monday evening. The other, uh, suggestion or from Garnett, I think is kind of a separate issue, which we certainly can address in the near future and, uh, but not really attaching it to the, I don't think your intent was to make it part of the Selman Ballas. Is that correct, Garnett?
No, no, I just, you know, obviously, obviously, there's some passion around this, so.
Right.
Don't want to lose that.
I think it's certainly worth, uh, putting on, uh, a workshop agenda down the road because we actually have funds, uh, budgeted for repair, you know, for, uh, Wick's Park improvements. That can currently be a part of our, uh, future discussions. If there's any other, no other questions regarding, uh, item five A? Let's move on to item five B, the Eurasian Water Mill Foil Report. Karen?
Um. Yes. In October, the city council, uh, created the Eurasian Water Mill Foil Advisory Committee to study and recommend a solution for the Eurasian water mill foil problem in Lake Kalamazoo Harbor. The committee got to work right away. There were six members, uh, two members of council. First started out as Mayor Ken Truster and Garnett Lewis, and then after the election, Scott Dean came in and Garn stepped down. From our citizen group, we had, uh, Robert Shookman. He's a co-director of Michigan Technological Research Institute. Pat Burrows, who is a Past Harbor Authority Board Member and environmental law attorney, civil engineer. And Kim, Tim Straker, the Chair of the Historic District Commission. So, uh, at our first meeting, we reviewed all of the data that had been collected over the prior two years. And that included, uh, some videos of some prior presentations at council meeting. It included the Kaiser Study that the council commissioned in two thousand and eighteen. And after that meeting, we decided to put together a panel of experts. And so our second meeting was a, a panel discussion with, with one, two, three, four. Seven, seven experts in the field. The first one was Melissa De Simone. She is the executive director of the Michigan Lakes and Streams Association. Zach Berry, a biologist, general manager with Aquatic Doctors, and Ryan Shuland, who's a biologist, a specialist in aquatic ecosystems, who is the president, owner of Aquatic Doctors. Andy Tomasz, Tom Azuski, he's a biologist with PLM Lake and Management Corporation. Jason Brookstra, biologist, Vice President of Great Lakes Operations, PLM Lake and Land Management Corp- Corporation. Michael Smith, who is the owner of MTT Dash Divers, who, who do the, the, the suctioning thing. And also Kim Arter, who is a Laketon Township Supervisor, and she's also the president of Bear Lake Lake Board. They've been fighting a mill foil problem too for several years. With the experts' assistance, our group went through each, each possible option to treat the mill foil. We, we looked at cutting and harvesting, none of the experts recommended doing that because it's, it's short-term game, no long-term gain. In fact, it makes the problem worse because the fragments drop off and, and reseed elsewhere. Diver-assisted suction harvesting. Very, very interesting possibilities there, but not for the immediate future. The president of the Dash Divers said it takes them about a week with two boats and divers to clear a half acre of dense mill foil. Our, our island of many acres would take more time than the summer has. And also, he said he was booked out a year and a half, and he did not recommend doing it that way. He said if we get the problem smaller, a, a smaller area or more scattered, then it would be viable. So possibly via, down the road, we could do dash diving to, to clear up any residuals and, and, and to maintain, because face it, this is going to be a long-term thing. This invasive species is just going to keep coming down the river for us. But if we can get it under control, uh, doing dash may be viable in the future. We looked at weevils. There's been some success in the past with them. They're not grown commercially anymore. Couldn't find anyone that would supply them, and the experts didn't know of anyone that would supply them either. So we also talked about introducing another non-native species. It's not, uh, an invasive species, but it is non-native to the Kalamazoo River. Dredging, dredging is a, a long-term solution that maybe can be looked at down the road. It's expensive, it's not viable in the short term. Bentic barriers. These were used successfully, with moderate success by an Indian tribe up north. And because they have, uh, rights that cities don't have, they were able to try it out without permitting. Otherwise, they wouldn't be permitted in Michigan. They, they do kill everything, not just the mill foil, but every, every other plant underneath them. Works like a landscape tarp, you know, everything dies underneath the tarp, basically. Sonar. Not sonar like the acoustic technology, but it's actually, uh, a chemical as well. It, it kills the Eurasian water mill foil, but it has to stay in the water for sixty days to be effective. So we have a flowing system, it wouldn't be effective for us. Uh, another thing we talked about was aeration. Again, aeration is not effective in a flowing system. It is also used more for algae and not for mill foil. Herbicide, lastly. Every one of the experts recommended we use herbicide. And the reason is it's safe. It's safe, it's approved by Eagle. And the, they all recommended the quicker we can get rid of their Eurasian mill foil, the faster that the native species can reestablish. Right now, they're being choked out. Uh, when it dies off in the fall, the oxygen goes down, the fish suffer. And they recommended to use herbicide, and that is what we are recommending to the city council. We also discussed if there were unintended consequences of using herbicide. I don't recall them naming one unintended consequence. They all said it would actually help the health of the water and of the, the lake bottom. Because the natives, the native habitat will reappear where the mill foil was treated. Uh, an additional benefit is that the duckweed, which is what is causing all the stink out there, will no longer be trapped in the islands of mill foil, and it will be able to float its way down the river and out to the Lake Michigan as it used to. In addition to the environmental considerations, uh, controlling the spread of the mill foil is important to our economic vitality, our, our tourist economy depends on having a nice, clean lake that's navigable and enjoyable. So it's vital to our local tourist-dependent economy. Another thing we looked into was, um, riparian owners' consent. We were under the opinion, we were under the understanding that we have to get consent from all the property owners along the shoreline. That is not the case when it's a government that is doing the cleanup work. I talked to Cliff Bloom, which you probably know as a riparian expert in the state of Michigan. He said, I, I'll, I'll kind of loosely quote him. He said, it's actually our obligation to keep the waterways clean and navigable. And just like it's our responsibility to do our roads, it's our responsibility to take care of the lake. So we kind of can set that one aside too. It's, it's, we don't have to get everyone's consent on the water. It's our job to do it. So our panel and our committee all unanimously concluded that herbicide was the way to go, and it's safe and effective. And it's cost-effective. Once, once the mill foil is under control, we would like to consider diver-assisted suction harvesting dash that may become a viable long-term solution. We also looked at the, we didn't really discuss it in depth, but we know that longer-term work and engagement with the communities upstream is, would also be beneficial in addressing the root causes of the weed growth, such as the agricultural runoff, failing septic systems, and loss of habit. We recommend that the city partners with the city of Douglas. Douglas has been under contract with Aquatic Doctors. Last year, well, it's still this year, we did put out an RFP to, uh, different contractors to give us a price, a request for proposal on treating their Eurasian water mill foil. Two contractors responded, and Aquatic Doctors was the low bid. Their price for twenty-twenty-one is still the same price as it was in twenty-twenty. So on that basis, they would likely be the low bid this year. However, uh, the city's ordinance, its Code of Ordinances states, under exceptions to bidding, that where the city council shall determine that the public interest will best, will be best served by purchase from or joint person purchase with another unit of government. So, um, on that basis, we recommend that we contract directly with Aquatic Doctors as, as soon as we can bring this to you for approval. The cost. They use a granular chemical in Douglas, the cost is five hundred and sixty dollars an acre. We estimate that we have probably between seventeen and twenty acres. So if you take the, the higher number, twenty acres, at five hundred and sixty an acre, and that's per treatment. So there would be two treatments. The total cost, um, with a discount because we're, they're offering a quantity discount if we go with Douglas. Uh, the cost for treating twenty acres would be twenty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. It'll likely be less than that because they said the second treatment is usually less than the first because the area shrinks a bit. And, but I wanted to give you the higher costs so that you're not surprised down the road by the full cost. That is the extent of the committee's study and recommendation. I did want to tell you a little bit. Am I still on?
Yep, you're still.
Okay, disappeared off my screen. Okay. We've discussed offering to the shoreline property owners an opportunity to join with the city and do any shoreline dock areas that they would like done. If, uh, if we decide to go this route, Aquatic Doctors will extend the same price that the cities get to our shoreline property owners. I talked with Jeff Sluggit, and he, he put forth the idea that, you know, we, we put out a notice and say, this is what the city is, is going to do if, if you approve doing that anyway. And if you would like to join with the city and have your area treated, we could bring them in under our contract, but they would have to pay the city in advance before we added them to the contract. So that is the extent of what I was going to tell you. You have a, a couple of members on the council that were there and maybe could expound a little bit. I know I'm not the greatest orator in telling the story, so I'm going to stop here and turn it over to you.
All right, okay. Uh, very, very helpful information, very, very good presentation. Ken, you, you've been kind of leading the charge on this. You want to make some comments?
Sure, uh, thank you, Mark. Well, I don't have anything really substance to add. Karen has done a really, really thorough job of putting together this report and, as well as, as bringing resources to the committee. The panel that we had and the background information was very complete. I'm convinced, uh, we're going the, the correct route. We're not committing to any multi-year, uh, treatment, but we, we know that that's, that we're going to be battling this from here on, but the first, I think we have an effective approach for the first year that will kind of, um, inform us better as to how we approach this on, on a permanent basis. Other members are here, uh, Scott and, uh, Scott Dean, and actually Pat Burrows is, is also with us, who's a member of our committee, and we thank him for the hours that, of time that he and his other fellow, uh, committee members put in.
Sure. Hey, uh, Scott, do you have some comments, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I, I'd just really like to thank Ken and Garnett for their leadership in establishing this, um, working group, this advisory group. I think it was a great, great way to tackle a very difficult problem. I mean, invasive species are a huge problem throughout the Great Lakes. And, you know, spending potentially twenty thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money is no easy decision. And nobody wants to have to, you know, chemically treat a body of water unless they've examined all of the other, um, options. And what's good, I need to thank Karen for becoming an expert in this topic. The panel she put together was quite remarkable, and I really felt like the analysis that we did with this panel was, was very science-based and very data-driven. And I think we've come up with the best, most, uh, most environmentally friendly and safest option here. And, um, I think partnering with Douglas on this shared body of water is, is, is a very good start in terms of future cooperation with Douglas. And, um, I think really, uh, the opportunity for some of the, um, other property owners that have docks, condo associations, for them to partner. I think it's, it's a great, um, way for a public-private partnership to, to keep our lake clean and get this invasive species out. And, uh, I think just, it's a really, um, thoughtful, um, analysis. I think we, we looked at all the unintended consequences, uh, the potential unintended consequences. I think we found the safest, most effective route, and, and indeed, the most cost-effective route will be to, uh, to, to partner with Douglas and, and to carry on the treatment program that they started last year. So, um, a big thank you to the team, and I feel like we've got a really solid recommendation to put forth to the council, um, at the next meeting.
Mayor? Just one more comment. I mentioned Pat Burrows as a member of the group. I think Bob Shuckman is also with us, if that's Bob's iPad four down there. And I certainly wouldn't want to leave him out because he's done a lot of work on Cal Lake, uh, to show us, uh, the condition of the lake. And, uh, and, um, as well as recommending the approaches that we should be taking.
Okay, before we invite those gentlemen to, uh, speak if they wish, Garnett, do you have anything to add?
No, I, Scott, Scott summarized it really well, um, and kudos to Karen and, and Ken's leadership on this. Karen, it, it was wonderful to be able to have, uh, everybody on the same Zoom call with all those businesses and hear the way in which they were going to tackle this. And for those of you who haven't watched that recording, I, I do believe it is posted, um, to the web, uh, to the city webpage. And if you have any questions about the difference between Aquatic Doctors and the Dash System, it's all right in there, and it's, it's well worth your time, uh, to take a listen and, and watch it. So thank you, thank you, Ken, thank you, Karen, um, very much.
And, and just one other, to jump on what Garnett said. I believe, uh, and Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, we are going to publish the, um, the, um, advisory committee's report. So, uh, you can go into much greater detail, uh, along with, with what Karen, um, kind of summarized earlier. So we'll have that report on, I believe, in not-too-distant future for people to consider.
Yeah, all the packets are online and and the report, if they look in the agenda packet, it's, it's online now too, but we'll, we'll make sure it's posted separately.
All right. Thanks, thanks. Pat Burrows, uh, welcome to our meeting, Pat. You and I sat in on a few meetings over the years, uh, together. It's good to see you. Do you have anything you want to share, Pat?
Well, thanks, Mark. I, I'd just like to say that I think this committee, um, did a great job in working together to come to the conclusion that it reached. I think the city can rely on this report as having, the committee having done its diligence. And I'd like to thank the city for allowing me to be a part of this process. Thank you.
All right, thanks for your comment. Bob, is that you out there? Would you like to say a few words? I think he's muted if he wants to speak. Ask to unmute. So is that something, Erin, you do?
I can ask him, but that doesn't mean he'll speak.
Oh, it's just getting a little sign that says, ask to unmute.
Yeah, it just doesn't always work.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, we'll take that as a, a polite, no, thank you. And so, uh, council have any other members of council having questions or comments? Ollie?
I just, I just want to commend everyone involved in the committee. I, I think it was, this is something that we've talked about many, many times this year, and, um, uh, especially getting the panel together seemed to really push the whole process forward in a way that the community can really understand. And, um, I just think the, uh, information, uh, that every, that was uncovered and the solutions are really helpful. So I think it was a, a great effort, and, um, I commend everyone.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Chris, yeah.
Yes, I, I agree, this was fast work, excellent work, put us on solid footing going forward into the, the summer months. And just a big thank you to everyone involved.
Hey. Lauren, you think is, Ed?
Uh, just echoing everything everyone else said, I really appreciate this council, um, putting the mill foil issue at the top of our priority list and getting it done before the spring season where we need to apply the herbicide. So I appreciate that, and all the experts that joined the committee, um, really appreciate them taking the time, uh, to be a part of this. So thank you for your efficient work and for giving us the pros and cons on all of the different types of, um, treatment options, but then, you know, coming up with the best solution. So I appreciate everybody's help.
Okay, all right. There's no other discussion or comments regarding this. This will be an action item on Monday evening's, uh, agenda. And, uh, we'll have a second, uh, opportunity to make comments at that time, council, thank you. Moving on to action item this evening, first order of business is New Year's Eve Wick's Park tent. I don't know if Karen or Cindy's going to handle this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right.
As you know, Wick's Park Bar and Grill have requested a special event application for approval. They want to put up a twenty-by-thirty-foot tent with a roof and one side that helps qualify it as outdoor dining. And in order to get their, um, special event liquor license, they need a permit from the city. They tried to list out some of the details, so there wouldn't be any surprises. There would be live music from nine PM to midnight. Weather permitting, this is all kind of weather permitting based. Um, and traffic control barriers would be coordinated with the DPW. Be any heating product, any heating, um, installations would have to be approved by the fire department, and the fire department would be doing an inspection. In the event of snow or rain, the event will likely be canceled.
All right, questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris?
I want to thank Christine again for being right out in the forefront of moving this forward. I think we all know that it's a tough time for all of our restaurants as well as everybody else that depends on our tourist population. I think this is an excellent idea to go forward with. And I'm wondering if there's any way we could do it administratively, because we won't be back in, I guess we'd be back in session on the 28th. But if other restaurants want to do the same thing, if we would be able to allow them to do it before New Year's Eve also.
We have the template, it's ready to go. And applying it to other properties would not be a problem. And if you want to give me the authority to administratively approve them for, I think it's December 30th, the tent would go up and January two, the tent would come down. I would be willing to do that.
That would be my suggestion.
Mr. Mayor, I would endorse that concept. I think the administrative approval process worked very well for the pop-up patios and very efficient and was fair to everybody, gave everybody a chance to get in there.
All right, good. Garnet, did you want to?
Yeah, absolutely. I think our businesses will breathe a sigh of relief. I think this will be even beyond Christine with Wicks Park. I wouldn't be surprised to see some others jump on this. So I think they'll welcome this move and I certainly appreciate and trust Cindy. Now, she knows what she's doing, so please move forward.
Mayor?
Yes, Scott?
Do we need any assurances around number of people permitted in the tent at the gathering? Do we, has Wicks addressed any sort of county department of health occupancy limits or the size of the gathering? And I guess, do we know how they intend to manage the gathering size? I'm sure there's not going to be a lot or as many as there typically are gathering places for New Year's. Any discussion of that?
That was addressed in their application as they would be COVID compliant. That is monitored and enforced by the health department. So if there's any issues with that, that would be a health department concern. A twenty by thirty tent without COVID has a maximum occupants load of forty people. So I'm thinking it would probably be about half that or even a little bit less. But that's, that's a health department issue that they have to comply with whatever the county tells they have to do.
So they're aware of that?
Yes.
On the size of their gathering. I'm certainly all in favor of anything we can do to help our local businesses survive. I just want to make sure that we remain compliant. We've done such a good job and I think it's been appreciated by our visitors and our residents how well our businesses have done to stay compliant with the COVID orders. And I just want to make sure that we carry that, you know, that through.
Okay, Ollie, do you have anything to?
Um, I just, I had a question. It's sort of an MLCC question. But Cindy, is, does the MLCC keep the alcohol consumption within the tent? Or is there sort of like a roped off area that's bigger than the tent or how does that work?
It's my understanding that the MLCC will do a physical inspection and they have to maintain the area that they indicated on their application. And I also understand, and I'm no MLCC expert, but there has to be some kind of demarcation of where the limits are that they can take their alcohol.
Okay, I was, I was just curious and also I wanted to echo what Chris said. I really give Christine Murphy a lot of credit because she's always at the forefront, like she was with pop-up patios. And she's always creative. She's always, you know, just getting out there and trying things. And, you know, always very resourceful. So I'm glad that this is going to work and that other people might be helped, other businesses might be helped by it.
Okay, Lauren, you have anything to add?
No, I just echo what everybody else is saying and I hope that if other restaurants in the area would like to participate in this, we make it as easy for them as possible to do so.
One of the reasons why we moved this up to an actionable item at a special, on the special meeting is that gives the businesses a few more days to let this move about the community by word of mouth. And maybe they can think ahead and then contact Cindy next week. Couple of comments from myself. One, I think we have to acknowledge that with running at, to extend the music to midnight. I think that's what Cindy said, is actually giving a variance off of our outside noise ordinance. I particularly don't have any problem with that for New Year's Eve. But I think we have to, you know, acknowledge that and be aware of that. So am I right on that one, Cindy?
That's correct.
You know, so.
Is it eleven o'clock?
Yes, we're outdoor amplification of music, I believe. But again, I think once we approve this, again, we won't be just approving it for Wicks Park. We would be approving it for any other organization or business, which wishes to take advantage of this opportunity. And again, it's New Year's Eve, you know, I don't have a problem with it. So I guess that's what we're doing if we pass this. Pass the motion in front of us. My second question, Cindy, is the thirty by twenty tent will extend, will it extend out past the parking lane, the parking spots? Remember our pop-up patios, we limited their patio to only go out to the end of the parking. Twenty feet may get us out another six feet into the road. Is that, I'm just kind of guessing that those parking lanes are usually fourteen feet long, if I remember right.
The pop-up patios were limited to a distance eight feet from the curb. In front of Wicks Park, though, the parking spaces are the diagonal spaces. They're wider than eight feet compared to the others for the pop-up patios. But they did have quite a bit more room and it will extend a little bit beyond the stripes. Vehicles when they're parked there also extend beyond the stripes. Everybody has these big giant pickup trucks with a front seat and a backseat and the giant pickup bed. And it's kind of tough getting through there sometimes during the summer. The barricades, if any barricades or barrels are needed, those will be coordinated through Scott at the DPW.
What is the intent to continue two-way traffic on Water Street with the addition?
They will be open to traffic.
Okay, all right, I guess that's the point that I think we, we I want to make. So those kind of complete my questions. Yes?
I move we approve the Wicks Park Bar and Grill special event application for outdoor seating with food and alcohol service and live music as described in the application.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Garnet, just a quick point. If we, if we could just give a heads up through the city webpage that regarding the noise, I think it would probably be good if we were proactive and just got to notice out, letting people know that there would be live music till midnight. Because I could, I could see if we didn't do that, we might get a little bit of fussing. So just give them a heads up.
Yes.
I'm sure everybody's expecting it, but, you know.
Cindy, should we amend the motion to include any other businesses who want to take advantage of this opportunity?
To include giving, authorizing me to administrator, administratively approve any other special events similar to.
Correct, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Me too.
Erin, do you have the, that verbiage?
Yes, I do. I have a motion was made by Peterson, second by Leo to approve the Wicks Park Bar and Grill Special Event Application Outdoor Seating with Food and Alcohol Service and Live Music as described in the application. The council further authorized zoning administrator Osman administrative privileges to approve any additional applications submitted prior to New Year's Eve.
Okay, all right. And one comment, and I had this, I think what this does is it provides us a template going forward into the spring where we could easily allow this, let's say we have an early spring, we have some decent weather and some of the businesses want to take advantage of that, we can just extend this out into, out into the next, next season until we actually get to approving the summer patio pop-up. So actually, that was Cindy's idea. I don't think credit for that. So, all right, if there's no further question, clerk, please call a roll on the motion.
Just to be clear, based on what you just said, Mayor, would you like me to remove the prior to New Year's Eve from the motion?
I don't, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, in that case, Peterson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
And?
Yes, asked unanimously. And thanks for your work on this, Cindy. I'm sure you'll do a good job, a good job as usual on these types of items. So now moving on to our next agenda item, approval of our new city manager contract. Karen, do you want to make any comments or should we just move on to Mr. Walsh and then go from there? Nope, you're muted. Maybe?
The quote of 2020, you're on mute. I will defer to Mr. Walsh.
All right, thank you. So Frank, we'd like to have you start this, start this item off, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I do that, I just want to make a couple of comments that really are not relevant to the contract at all. I hope that all of you will, in the next couple of weeks, go back and watch a recording of this meeting tonight. You know, you're dealing with issues like milfoil and the business world and COVID and an emotional bandshell on the waterfront. City managers, you're dealing with a lot of tough issues today. And as I listen to you, to all of you, what I see is a very professional, cordial group who's working as a team. And I'm going to use this recording as a model for some of the other communities that I work with. I applaud you for the way you're working together. The second thing is, I want to thank the staff. Dame Lee Karen, who's, I've just done an exceptional job as your manager. Erin, the way she read back that motion was very impressive. And just working with her on the contract, Peter on the finance end and Cindy has been extremely helpful. The staff, Ryan, if it's proved, has a lot to look forward to in working with the staff. And I want to thank the individuals that I worked with, the contract is the most difficult, believe it or not. There's a lot of time that goes into a recruitment, hours and hours and hours. The toughest part's the contract. And I think I told you that back in September when I first met with you. And Mark and Garnet and staff have really made this seamless, very seamless. One of the most productive sessions I've had in contract negotiations. They came at it with a real spirit of teamwork. Now getting on to the components of the contract that's before you, counsel. A number, I'll hit the main points and then ask, be able to answer any questions you have. And I know Mr. Heiss is on the call as well. The salary is, was listed at ninety-five to a hundred and five thousand. That's what we agreed to when it was posted. The salary before you is a hundred thousand, right in the midpoint. There's included in the contract is nine thousand dollars for moving, relocation and housing expenses. Forty-five hundred on the signing of the contract and forty-five hundred on the first day. And I want to thank the assistance of, that the mayor's been on the housing issues, been tough, been working really closely. And I believe that there's a potential that, at least starting out, that Ryan will be able to be a part of the community by living in the city. A three hundred dollar, a three hundred dollar a month car allowance, I think that's what it currently is. Six-month severance, which is what it currently is. And that six-month severance is for non-cause. If there is cause on separation, misfeasance, male feasance, that sort of thing, then there is no severance pay. And that's covered in the contract. Vacation, sick, holiday, healthcare, short-term disability, all of those benefits are the same that are prescribed. Mr. Heiss did not request anything outside of what's offered to your current staff. And the same with pension, there was no request for anything outside of what is offered. So again, the main components would be a midpoint salary range of a hundred thousand and nine thousand dollars for moving and relocation. Everything else was already included in your contract. And there's a clause in there for performance evaluation as well. All in all, it was really a seamless project, process over the last week. That's the main components of the contract, Mr. Mayor. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
All right, going around council, anyone have any questions for Mr. Walsh? Ollie?
When does Ryan start?
February first.
Which isn't the contract, I believe, been there somewhere, I saw it. Any other comments? It's been a whirlwind of activity. We unanimously approved offering a contract to Ryan Heiss on December fourteenth. And here we are today calling a special meeting to approve the contract. One of the conversation points was move the contract date up as soon as possible to give Ryan some extra time on the, on the back end with giving adequate notice to his current employer and conducting a move to Sagatuck with a few days to spare before he starts his job. So, yeah, things fell in place and I think we owe a lot of that to Frank's leadership and of course to Ryan and his openness and his interest. Your interest in taking this position. Garnet, have you to add?
No, it's been a great process and Frank, I appreciate your leadership and I've shared that with you and look forward to having Ryan on board. So with that, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and move to approve the city manager employment agreement between the city of Sagatuck and Ryan Heiss.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Louis, seconded by Truster to approve the contract between the city of Sagatuck and city manager to be Ryan Heiss with startup date of February first, 2020. With the clerk, please call a roll.
Gladly. Louis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Luke, Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Back in.
Yes.
Welcome, Ryan.
So normally we would stand up and applause, but I really do that, Ryan. I have asked Ryan if he wanted to say a few words, so are you out there, Ryan?
I am, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your work and thank you to the council for your trust and confidence. I am extremely excited to get back to Michigan and I am a package deal. And so with that, I'd like to introduce my wife, Alicia Wang. She is a talented graphic designer. She does mostly print ads and she's also in the hospitality business. And she designed this Airbnb that we sit in now. And the newest addition to the family, this is Vivian Louise. And she is eight months and she woke me up at five forty-five this morning, didn't you, pumpkin? So, like I said, we're a package deal and we're just really excited. We love the beach, we love the water and. Um, we love the beach, we love the water, um, and we, we love the town and the city when we, when, when we were visiting. And, um, it's good, it's going to be really nice to be close to my, my family in Jackson, Michigan. So, thank you for joining.
Yay, yay.
Bye, I will see you later. Um, and then also, uh, an expression of gratitude for the, for the other candidates, right? I mean, there's a lot of, if you do this right, there's a lot of work that goes into it. And I think Mr. Dean, um, well, I should say, Aaron, Aaron told me to, to go back and, and watch that, um, watch that process, um, for an ego boost, uh, with the unanimous decision, which I did. But a, all the candidates were, were extremely intelligent and, and well-suited for the position. And Mr. Dean, um, he said it correctly when he said, you know, Michigan's lucky to have the, the two existing candidates in the state. And then, um, hopefully, there'll be a way to get, uh, Ms. Leslie Riddle, I think it is, um, to Michigan. Uh, as for the recruiter, Frank, wow, um, just be, it's not just because he's from Jackson, Michigan. But he's, he's been first class, uh, extremely responsive, um, very positive too. I, I mean, I'm, I'm sure he gets lots of calls from, from potential candidates. And, um, you know, that's, that's got to be tough to, to stay positive and, you know, keep them in the game, so to speak. But he's been first class. Frank, I don't know if you are interested in working in Wisconsin, but I'm sure the village of Ag Harbor would, would like to use your services, uh, first class all the way around. Uh, and I look forward to our, our, our friendship going forward. Um, as mentioned, glad to be the unanimous pick. Mayor Becken has done outstanding job with, um, accommodating housing. He introduced me to a lovely lady that's, uh, gonna, gonna accommodate a condo in the city, which I think is important. And, um, you know, get a lay of the land and, and get a feel for the city. And, um, it's a walkable distance, which is really exciting, um, for my wife, uh, to come walk the baby down to city hall and have lunch. And, um, yeah, a lot of, you know, just to run and bike. And that's, there's a lot of exciting things that go along with that. So housing stuff in Sagatuck, so I also appreciate the, uh, the housing stipend, uh, moving stipend. That's, that's really important to me and I, I appreciate that. Staff, your staff has been outstanding, awesome group. I really look forward to working with them. I think we're going to get along, uh, really, really well. And, um, I'm just excited to get there. And, um, you know, I did a lot of research and I, I know what's going on there. And as I mentioned during my interview, I know it's quite complex, uh, but I feel like I'm really well-suited for the job. And I'll, I'll be watching your meetings and, um, I'll be able to hit the ground running. And, um, thank you, thank you so much.
Hey, Ryan, I understand your, your folks have, uh, tracked out the distance between where they are in Sagatuck.
Yeah, multiple times, right? So what, I don't know if I mentioned this, but when I told them that, um, you know, that was a candidate for this job, uh, my mom's eyes, like, she just started falling, crying, just like with so much excitement. And like immediately, well, the day before, which I'm kind of upset about because she could have really jinxed it, uh, the day before they made the trek. And I was like, and I was like, Mom, hopefully you didn't go into businesses and I hope you weren't lobbying. Just like all the things that I know that she would probably be doing. Um, so anyways, yeah, she, they're, they're thrilled. And they, they were kind enough to go and check out the, the condo as well and, um, meet with the owner. And so they've been, they've been great about this. And I've, I've made, you know, how things go, I made some, I, I had no connections to Sagatuck whatsoever. Um, but I've already made some, some friends, some residents have reached out to me. That's, that's really great. And I told Karen today, um, if anyone is interested in, in reaching out and setting up meetings, I'm happy to accommodate. So she has my, my personal cell phone, which she said she's going to use wisely as far as distribution. Um, but anyways, um, so far Sagatuck's been very kind.
Okay, uh, anyone else have any other questions, comments, Ken?
Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to welcome Ryan, but one final word of commendation for the mayor and mayor pro town and, and our, um, uh, executive recruiter, you guys did a fantastic job. You know, having, having been at the helm just for a little bit before this process really got underway. I knew the work that was going to be involved for, for the two of you particularly. So thank you very much for pulling this through, uh, Mark and Garnet.
Like you, thank you. Uh, other comments, questions? Is that from Karen?
Yep, that was me. Um, I just wanted to add my welcome to Ryan. And I've been here a little over three months now. And I'm going to feel very comfortable leaving with Ryan in charge and very, very happy you picked him.
All right, thanks. All right, uh, all the pleasantries aside, Ryan, February first, it's time to get at it. Enjoy yourself between now and then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and counsel.
All right, okay, well, uh, Merry Christmas to you and your family. This is a, hopefully it's a, a, a nice Christmas. It is, it is. I see a lot of smiles, uh, uh, around, uh, the council, uh, Zoom table. Um, they've been few and far between, uh, the last month, it's the, the last year, it's been challenging here. As it is in a lot of communities. So, uh, we certainly look forward to, uh, fresh start, starting February one. That being said, uh, now open up, uh, public comment for those who'd like to, uh, address counsel on any, uh, any item. Uh, limit three minutes. When recognized, please, uh, state your name in the media residence. Don't make yourself, you know, visible and, uh, we'll acknowledge you. Is that Peg? Peg, are you muted?
Uh, you know, I'm all right.
Okay.
Um, there isn't any reason to take my name forward, uh, Monday at your council meeting to serve as, um, the chair of the finance, the public, well, how do you put this? The public private, uh, work on the gazebo. I'm more than wanted to serve on a committee, but I certainly am not willing to, uh, take on anything more than that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll take that under advisement.
Thank you.
You bet. Uh, anybody out there? Aaron, you see anybody?
I do not see anybody else, but as a citizen and employee, I just want to say, Ryan, how excited we are to have you join us. And thanks to Frank for such an exceptional job and everybody else who worked on it.
Okay.
And Choochie.
All right, Frank, are you still on board?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
Where does that leave you with us, with you now, other than sending you a big fat check?
Well, it leaves us as, um, much further than when we started, really good friends. Um, I've just, I have to tell you, I've really, really enjoyed this process and, and watching, um, uh, Ryan and hi, his family. And, uh, I don't know, I'm just, sometimes you leave these searches and you, you scratch your head a little bit. And, uh, in this case, I just feel really warm about getting to know all of you. Um, and again, I hope you'll all go back and watch a recording of, um, of this meeting you just had. It leaves me, um, with really, really high hopes, uh, for continued success in Sagatuck. And you made a great choice, um, and I have nothing but, uh, positive thoughts about Sagatuck going forward. It's really, as I said four months ago or three and a half months ago when you hired me, it would be an honor to serve you and it has been an honor to serve you. And I, I thank you very much and I wish you all a, a very Merry Christmas and a, and a healthy twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
All right, Frank, well, thank you again for, for all your efforts and, uh, happy holidays to you and your family. Uh, council comments before we adjourn?
Happy holidays.
Yep, okay. All right, uh, well, on behalf of the city of Sagatuck and Sagatuck City Council, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and, uh, joyous new year. And, uh, we'll see you Monday night, uh, for our next regular, uh, scheduled council meeting. Uh, do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, motion by Peterson, seconded by Louis, uh, to adjourn the meeting at five P M. And, uh, uh, clerk, please call or roll on the motion.
Peterson?
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Louis?
Yes.
Uh, Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes, and we say Merry Christmas too.
Thank you, and Becken.
Uh, yes. Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, Merry Christmas.